This is a public hearing for the borough of Crafton for the Verizon Cable Franchise Contract Renewal. Immediately following this hearing, there'll be a hearing on the South Grandview Road Reconstruction. As of this moment, I see no means residents to come forth to discuss the Verizon Cable Franchise Contract Agreement Renewal. I'm gonna ask just one more time, does anybody have any comments on the Verizon franchise contract renewal? The manager's gonna describe the process from here, once we have or do not have public comment.
Right, okay. So, just real quick, this is kind of a... This meeting is something that we just have to hold as part of the Verizon Cable Franchise Contract renegotiation. So essentially, cable companies to do business in municipalities typically have a contract in which they negotiate a franchise fee, in which we make a small percent of, I think it's the gross profits that they get. This is something that we do as a group through our council of governments, which is the Shore West Cog. We're just required to open the floor for any public comment, if anyone has anything to say about their Verizon-specific cable service, or if you have any questions, we cannot answer them at this time, we just have to pass them on to the legal counsel that is part of the council of governments negotiating the contract. Other than that, this one's kind of just an open-shut one.
Okay. So, speak now or forever hold your peace until the next time.
For the next four to five years.
So, with that, I don't hear or see anybody coming forth, so I'm gonna close that aspect of this hearing and move on to the near, the next hearing, which is for South Grandview Road Reconstruction. We have a few people signed up. Murray Colts, 24 South Grandview Avenue?
Mm-hmm, yes. Mary?
Uh, Mary, would you like to come up and discuss if you have any...
Uh, like questions about it, or is that what?
Yeah, or would you, would you all like to wait to give your comments until after the engineer's presentation on the project?
I think that would be, yes, I'd like to wait until after that.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna proceed with the engineer's presentation, and then at the end of the presentation, we'll have you come up in the order in which you're listed here, and if anybody else would like to jump on, and we're gonna respect those that signed up first.
Hi, my name's Alvaro Arquín from Gateway Engineers. One of the engineers has been working with Crafton Borough on various sewer separation projects. One of the ones that we're kind of moved on with is the South Grandview Avenue project. We submitted ten different projects to Alcasan for different conceptual plans for sewer separation projects. These are projects where you have, for example, at South Grandview, you have catch basins along the road that are connected into the sewer line, it's a combined sewer and storm system. What we're trying to do is separate the storm from the sewer. We submitted ten different projects to Alcasan, they came back, they really liked two of the projects, and one of them is this South Grandview project.
I'm working on it, sorry.
You know, at the intersection of South Grandview and Ewing Road, there's about seven catch basins that are there right now, and those catch basins are connected directly into the combination system. Those seven catch basins are all kind of within the brick road along Ewing Road and South Grandview, and what we're planning on doing is going ahead and replacing those catch basins, removing them and putting new catch basins in, with new storm line and manholes that will separate all that drainage area, it's about fifteen acres of a watershed that falls in those two roads and in those neighborhoods. We're gonna go ahead and take that storm water, separate it from the combination sewer, and then just discharge it to the nearby stream that's along Ewing Road, on the, kind of on the hillside there. So the project's gonna require us to go ahead and demolish seven of the catch basins that are there, like I mentioned, and install a new storm line, so new plastic lines under the road. In doing that, we're gonna either have to, you know, we have three options right now. One option is to go ahead and just trench through with the new, the new storm lines that we're gonna be installing, the new manholes, trench through and come back and then just replace the trench and leave it as it is. One of the things that I pointed out to the borough was, you know, we were out there on a rainy day about two months ago, and there's just low points and puddles all through that intersection. Up Grandview, there's a big puddle along the side of the road there, so... Yeah, so that's, so that's, so that's one of the items we brought up to the borough was, do we wanna go ahead and try to fix the road while we're doing this work, or do we wanna just patch up the brick and then afterwards, you know, people didn't complain, and you guys were in here fixing the road and nothing got fixed? So that's something we brought up, and obviously going from trenches and just putting the brick back to ripping that whole area out and paving it is an additional cost. And then also, you know, the third option would be to rip everything out and then reset it back as brick, as a third option. We've gone ahead and done some, you know, some cost estimates for the, for the different options, and... The one option that we have, which is just replacing the trench back where we dig to put the pipe in, in restoration of pavement for that, it would be about fifty-nine thousand dollars, or restoration of brickwork cost about fifty-nine thousand dollars, that's option number one. Option number two is to go ahead, rip out all the brick and just reestablish your crown and have a nice draining road and pave it, that's about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. In asphalt, just an asphalt road. If we go back and try to take all the bricks off, regrade the road, put new brick back, that's about a hundred, almost a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So it kind of doubles and then triples in feet by those different, those different methods of replacing the, or fixing the road. So that's, I'm here just to present those three different options. You know, the first one is just to leave the road the way it is, just trench through it, put the bricks back and leave it as it is.
I got it.
Now you got it.
HDMI.
Yeah. Yeah, and as far, as far as the Alcasan grant, you know, we're applying for the grant to just do it at the end of the month, we'd like to go ahead and get the application in for that. And with this sewer separation project, you know, Alcasan takes a look at what, what you're helping with, with the overflow further downstream, what you're removing, this project here is a really good project. It's a really good project because we have all these catch basins kind of located in the same vicinity, so infrastructure-wise and construction-wise, it's low cost construction-wise, and Alcasan, they can match you up to eighty-five percent of the construction cost. So that's, that's the benefit of these projects, you're gonna be pretty much doing it for fifteen cents on the dollar with Alcasan. This over here, this right here kind of shows you the new layout of storm lines that we'd have to install to do this work. As I mentioned, you know, we have, we have the seven catch basins, you have one over here off of Ewing Road, you have two over here off of South Grandview, and then you have three down at the intersection here, and then this other one down here, it's kind of a little brick, brick square. So these seven catch basins are kind of, they're pretty close to each other. So the amount of work that we'd be replacing for brick would be, would be pretty much up where the two catch basins are here, about along South Grandview, from there down, we'd be replacing. And then if you go up Ewing Road, it'd be up to where that first catch basin is. And then coming up here, there's already a concrete collar that exists on South Grandview, so we keep that concrete collar, they're replaced away from that area. So it's about, it's about ten thousand square feet of a brick that would be replaced. So right now, you know, one of the things is, the way we're showing it right now on our concept plan is going ahead and then doing the whole area repaved with pavement. And not doing the trench, not doing, putting brick back, it would be remove all the brick and then pave that entire area. There's a little area right here that I think would be wise, if we just went ahead and, there's no reason to leave just a little area of brick here, so I think we'll just expand, expand the scope, dip a little bit more, so this whole area here will be paved. South Grandview, coming up the hill, from where that concrete edge is, that will stay the same, we're not touching that area. And then after the bend of this side of South Grandview, that would all remain the same. So it's just kind of at the intersection area where we're gonna go ahead and, and like I mentioned, you know, this is a brand-new storm line here, brand-new storm line, couple manholes to bring the storm down, bring it into the hill and we discharge it. There's an existing water course that's here now, and down here where the path is, we're gonna put a culvert, there's no culvert there now, water just kind of goes over the, over the path. So we'll manage that and take care of the storm water through here. So really, you know, the bulk of the project is storm water, and associated with that is just the restoration of the road. And overall, for the project, if I go through, the first option would just be to, to do the trench restoration back, you're looking at about three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, that's how much that project would cost, or the restoration. If you go ahead and do what we're showing here, which is paving of the road, you're looking at about four hundred and forty-two thousand. If you go up and try to put the brick back, it's almost five hundred thousand dollars. So there is, there is a change from, you know, the cheapest version, like I mentioned, is three hundred and twenty-three all the way up to five hundred thousand dollars. So it's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar change.
And cost.
Yeah, and, and yeah, that wouldn't be reimbursable for Alcasan. So, they're not, they're, they're, the grant isn't for them to pay for, for road reconstruction, it's more for sewer, so...
Okay, if we ask questions, just for clarification?
Are you done?
Yeah. Yeah, this, this is one of the areas, you can see a lot of the water just pond to the big low point. Big low point right here, the catch basin is actually way over here, and the water's just sitting here. I mean, this area here, you can kind of see how the water's moved away from the gutter. Yeah, that's a good one of this one, I mean, it's just, just a thing here, this water's just sitting there. So if we're gonna fix the road, we might as well reestablish the crown, get the water in the inlet and get the water out of the, off the road. Yeah, I mean, water's just kind of running in the middle of the road.
I have a quick question, just for, I guess, clarification question for you guys. So, assuming that we get this grant, which is, you know, chances seem good, the construction of this wouldn't start until at least next year?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll hear back from the grant in the fall.
Right.
You wouldn't want to start this in the winter, we'd wait, we'd wait till the spring.
So, the reconstruction, whether it's paving or breaking anything of the road, although it might not be covered by the grant, could theoretically be put into our paving program, so it's not like we have to come up with extra sewer money to take care of that, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's good news.
Is that all?
Yep, any questions?
Bert, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
No, I think Alvaro covered it. To me, the key is, just as the manager mentioned, that the restoration work is not reimbursable, so that would just come out of your paving program if you decided to do the entire intersection in asphalt or brick. They would reimburse for the trench repair. So the first option that he mentioned, where it would be cutting the brick and then putting them back in, and you would see the patches, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be seamless, obviously. You'd see those, that patchwork along those trench lines. That would all be covered, that just restoration of the trench. So this additional cost would be come out of the municipality's paving budget, and some future costs.
Okay.
That's just one clarification.
Alright, so, I'm gonna go down the list of folks that signed up. Let, this is your opportunity to speak to your feelings about the project, about reconstruction, about what the future of this intersection will look like. I think it's important that you have an opportunity to weigh in and help us make a decision as to how to go about recon, about the reconstruction. And from what I understand, you know, the paving component will give us a new subbase and give you a proper crown and alleviate the ponding. If we stick with just the brick restoration in the trenches, it'll, the roadway will essentially be the same, and all the improvements will be subsurface, and we will capture... What's the rate of capture without putting a new crown in?
It's still, we're still showing the same rate of capture, you know, the water will eventually either get there or just infiltrate the ground, but we're still showing, we're going off of the fifteen acre drainage area. It's still the same watershed that we're looking at.
Okay. Alright, so with that, Mary?
Um...
If you could just come up and address council, any man, please.
Okay. Part of my questions are just for clarification. So, the, you're going to create two separate drainage systems, correct?
One drainage system, just designated just for storm water. So now you're gonna have catch basins catching just rainwater and separating it from the sewer. Right now, what's there is a combination of sewer and storm. So right now, you have your sewer from your house goes into the line, the catch basins collect the water from the road that goes into the same line, and it all goes down together down to Alcasan.
So you're right, there's two systems, one for the sanitary sewage, and we're going to install a mini storm system to take that storm water flow out of the sanitary system, which creates room for more sanitary sewage, it eliminates backups, it eliminates overflows downstream into the environment. So there's all kind of reasons, I'm gonna talk later in my report about compliance reasons that these types of projects are necessary.
Right, so will this help the storm water go down more efficiently all the way to the chartiers, assuming?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and then...
The real question at hand is, do we take this opportunity to, to fix all the ponding water and the inefficient capturing and collection of the water that's there now, and regrade the road, either in asphalt or in brick? And then now, when it rains, the road drains, there won't be puddles, there won't be areas where water lay, and, and the water will just be efficiently removed.
Okay.
So that's really the question at hand, is, does it make sense to do this while we're here? And, which will cost more money, that's, that's the question.
Okay, and the paving is, helps water better?
Asphalt paving?
Yes, rather than re, whether you restore the brick or put new brick, but...
There's not much of a difference, I mean, you would think that paving carries the water faster and better, and I would guess in some small increment it does, but essentially the brick will serve in a very similar capacity. So there, there's no benefit or loss to either one of the two surfaces. It really comes down to aesthetics and money, right? Asphalt's cheaper, but some people don't like how it looks, and some people do, they prefer asphalt over brick, right? So the riding surface, things of that nature.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure. Rich?
Hi, Richard Gaten, so I'm a lifetime resident, pretty much, of Crafton, and lived on South Grandview for at least forty years of my life. A couple of quick questions, I mean, obviously, I'm here, I'm for combined sewer overflow projects, and, you know, we've been doing this for years, and with Alcasan, communities around the area. I don't think anybody has a problem with separating the sewers, obviously my issue is simply with the aesthetics of repairing it. And from what I read, just go home and Google "brick streets", you'll see that communities all over the country are actually scraping up the asphalt and have heating systems to help burn off the asphalt and restoring brick streets, because their lifetime is up to a hundred years, where, from what I read, lifetime of the asphalt street is about fifteen years. So if you're talking about costs, are you considering the replacement in fifteen years of the asphalt? Are you considering the next replacement in another fifteen years? So if you adjust for those costs, I think the money-wise, you're gonna get back in, into an equality of a situation where you equal, expend it traditionally. Obviously, these guys can tell you how long a brick street lasts versus how long a, a paved street lasts. And I realize you're only doing a portion where the intersection is, but from what I read, that they're doing this around coming for flood control as well, because the brick streets actually drain the water versus the runoff from asphalt streets. So I know that's a little contrary to what you just said.
No, that's a true statement. It's not...
You throw a lot of water on the brick street, you'll see it doesn't run anywhere, drains into the street, and I think that helps distribute the rainwater as well. So you'll be creating some more runoff, granted not a very large area. And, and you lose the brick streets that are part of Crafton. So that's, that's my concern, cost over time of replacing asphalt every... And that's a, that's an intersection that gets a lot of water, as these guys have pointed out, acres of water. You get a lot of salt wash down on that asphalt, you get a lot of freezing and thawing down there. I think you're gonna find you're replacing it on a pretty good clip, in ten to fifteen years, likely given our streets.
May I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
In your opinion, as a resident living in that area, do you think the borough should endeavor upon reconstructing it with the proper crown, giving it a new subbase? Or are we better off trying to minimize and just try to replace the cut, you know, repair the cut that we made when we put the pipes in and then just leaving it as is?
My opinion would be the first option, which is simply repairing the trenches and keeping the brick. Or the ultimate option would be replacing the brick and restoring it so that you have a brick intersection. Just near that intersection, I don't know who did the repair, I'm assuming it was a utility repair, there's about a fifty feet, sixty foot section that they did last summer. Two guys did it, and they were, did one half of the street one week, and the next week they did the other half. They did have a couple other guys when they ran some equipment, but I don't think it was the borough that did it.
It was, that's why you're running from water.
And it's beautiful, I mean, you get, you take a look at that street and you think, wow, you know, can we do the sections like that on all our brick streets? You know, should we be doing more maintenance on the brick streets so that we do get the hundred years of life out of it? Because I can tell you that, you know, I've been back in our house, you know, like the house I grew up in, for ten years, and there's nothing that's on South Grandview, my block is out there. I mean, there's been no maintenance on these streets. So over time, you know, if you can do the maintenance and restore certain parts of streets, I think, you know, there's... Seems to make sense, and other communities are different. I mean, Google's, really, you'd be surprised at how many, there's a whole company that sells the bricks. Because apparently the old bricks are a little better than what they put down today.
I wanted to maybe call in our public works director, if he wouldn't mind talking a little bit about, just, you know, some feedback on your maintenance over time, maybe that'd be discussed.
I think the issue with the brick streets in Crafton, and I brought this up to a few budget meetings, that actually if you want to get into brick restoration, a portion of your road program needs to go to that. It's obviously costly, but when you reconfigure a street with the gutter line itself, I've been in Crafton since 2014. There's a reconstruction of one street that was done with new curbs, new gutters, and they tried to actually reconfigure the gutter line, actually was a location, I think the council president's aware of this, that what happened when they reconstructed the brick, it totally missed the new catch basins that were installed and didn't follow the gutter line, actually bypassed it. The reason being, the configuration of the brick streets now, as such, that you have to do total reconstruction. I mean, you can do a portion of the street, the gutter line, it's not to say that the water's gonna actually flow to those new catch basins that were installed, which that's experience I seen. It was a steep slope street, and there's videos of the water bypassing catch basins. I think what needs to be done, or has to be a decision, I think I even did this in my lab, but you have to make a decision what brick streets you actually want to keep, and ones that you have to reconstruct or redo in asphalt. But the cost to maintain brick streets, it wasn't like it is two, three hundred years ago. We have stockpiled brick, the old brick down in the borough Public Works Facility, that we can use, and actually worked with a contractor, what tells us, approved to use some of the brick to reconstruct that portion of South Grandview. I have quotes from that contractor, does an excellent job, he did it to all members in the same way. He does excellent brick work, he comes in and repairs the base as needed with new concrete, or if he uses existing concrete, he fills in with the subbase that is suitable and matches the road itself. So I think the question here is, and my recommendation would be, I hate to say it, is go with the asphalt, unless you're gonna do all the stuff from Crafton Boulevard down, because the condition of that road isn't, isn't well-drivable. I think what you need to do is actually make sure the water with this project gets to where you want it to go. Doing a gutter line, I don't think it's gonna really, you're not gonna get the bang for your buck, because I think there's an upper possibility that just repairing the brick gutter line's not gonna do what you want it to do. So my recommendation would only be to go with the asphalt, not you get ten, fifteen years out of it. On the same token, if you're gonna redo the brick, I think it has to be part of the master plan of which the streets where you want to keep brick in Crafton Borough. I mean, you can't keep up every street that we have, Belvedere is another one that's been talked about, discussed. There was a water break down in Belvedere, the same thing, a hundred feet of Belvedere was done, it's done, done well. Same contractor, water break, but you can't wait for utility companies to come in and do brick reconstruction. I think you need like a five-year plan, a piecemeal, Belvedere probably one point two million, one, you know, two million dollars to rebuild it. So you take the road program, you do it in phases. Grandview with this storm separation project, my recommendation probably be at this point is to go with the asphalt, and that way you're assured that the water's going where you want it to go. If you do the brick gutters, I'm not sure that you can meet the catch basins and direct the water where you want it to go because of the condition of the rest of the Grandview Avenue, especially near Ewing, the whole intersection is done.
Yeah, the hill in Grandview is much worse than the other parts of Grandview, right? Obviously, there's no maintenance and no repairs, even in the repair, you don't even, you know, fix any of those blocks or spend any money on that. So I, I understand that it's easier just to create a perpetual paving situation where you have to perpetually have to spend money and pave. And I don't know if, you know, if you're talking about three percent inflation in costs of fifteen years, you're paying forty-five percent more for that paving, you know, fifteen years later, and it's a certainty that you'll have to do it, versus the brick streets, you know, they spend some of the money to maintain them, you know, I understand the way that it perked the water flow, but if you do get a backup, it's gonna go down. And here, they're building the catch basins, so it shouldn't be too hard to match the catch basins.
And the gutter line, but then the whole, the whole street itself, they prepare. I mean, you can fix the gutter lines and try and direct the water as best you can, but if you have another way the surfaces, the rock grand, you're really truly meet what you need to meet, to have the water directed where you want it to go. And believe me, Harris, and Fields were all aware of what happened on Harris, with the reconstruction of curbs and gutters, and they totally missed the catch basins. So that is some concerns, just from personal experience, you know, you pay your bills, so... Well, that's because the brick repair, we actually had to go to asphalt to Harris because of the brick repair didn't send the water where they wanted it to go. This was a project of a total reconstruction of the gutters, curbs, not the street itself, with the gutter and the curbs, that actually didn't do what we wanted to do, missed the catch basins, it went down all the way down to Clearview off of Harris. So that's why we went to the asphalt.
I think what I'm hearing, just to summarize from our public works director, is his recommendation would be to either pick full asphalt or full brick redo, but sort of eliminate the trenching option.
Yeah, but the trenching option, we're not reestablishing gutters, we're not, we're connecting, we're placing a catch basin and putting a pipe in there, that's it, we're not trying to get water in any certain direction, it's just getting the, you know, from the catch basin to a manhole to the outfall. We're not rebuilding gutters, we're not trying to get water to any direction, it's just, we're just replacing the catch basin and doing your storm line, that's it.
The important thing is have the storm water go to the catch basins.
And that's, that's what we, that would be established with paving the road, we'd have a crown, and the water would be directed to the, to the catch basins.
But on the contrary, the situation would be essentially the same as it is now. Yeah, if you're okay with living the way the ponds and the puddles and all of that stuff is, then that's a vote for leave, just fix the trenches and walk away. So, I mean, that's, that's one of the options.
Well, if you know with Ewing there, you're paved anyway, the part that you're talking about. And there's already, there's a brick drainage trench that has always vented over the hill, that was runoff.
And we're, we're replacing that intersection and having a few doors.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's already been there, that's not really part of the issue, it simply would be the intersection of Ewing and, you know, where the bridge is, it's not the entire project, so... I mean, obviously, if you trench Ewing, you can just repave it because it's already...
That's what we're doing for Ewing, we're repaving it.
Rob, I just wanted to ask you a question. So you, you believe that option one is not the best option?
No, my recommendation would be to, I mean, you have an option... No, my recommendation would be to, I mean, if you have an opportunity, here's a segue, I mean, I, I think the most important thing that the council and the boroughs need to be charged with is really, what brick streets do you want to keep and which ones are you okay with resurfacing?
So, so you would prefer option two or option three?
I, I, I think the, the best thing to do in this situation with the installation of new catch basins is the asphalt, to make sure the water goes where you want it to go. And like Rick said, if you do the gutter lines, you're still gonna have puddles because it's an underlying surface unless you rebrick and redo the whole, the whole quadrant wherever you're doing it.
So the third option is, you're not crazy about that either?
No, I think the only way to really.
Complete brick.
Either rebrick the, the whole project or, or come up with asphalt. I don't think a gutter line's gonna work. And it was obvious.
Well, that was option one, right? Are you giving us those options again?
Yeah, the first option was just replacing the catch basins and doing new storm line and dumping it out into the side of the town. So this is the first option, yeah, so the first option was just gonna trench where you see these black lines. And that's it. We're not, we're not fixing anything else in the intersection, just doing the trench where we put a pipe in.
Right.
The second option is replace the catch basins, put the pipes in, take all these bricks, all right here, take all this brick out and replace it with pavement. The third option is to take all, do the catch basins, do the pipe, get rid of all the brick and put it back with new brick. But reestablish crowns, regrade the road.
Okay, so you'd be okay with third option?
Rebrick it at all?
I mean, expensive, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's either three or one, either asphalt or rebrick the whole.
Two or three.
Three, you go asphalt or rebrick. I think, I think if you do just a gutter line, you're not gonna get.
Well, no, okay, that was option one.
The other results aren't that far, so you, the asphalt or the brick, I'm sure.
I think that it's really just a question of what cost we're able to take on and still maintain the rest of the program next year.
And again, I mean, Crafton has some, eight miles of brick streets. Thirty-two miles of streets you have in Crafton, approximately eight miles of brick. So, and I think at some point, there's gonna be tough decisions made, which streets do you want to keep brick? Which ones are you okay to repave? I mean, that's obviously something that's gonna have to be discussed and I guess in a public format with council, with the manager's office, to make a decision. I mean, obviously the cost to do brick repair is, was it three times the amount of asphalt, three or four times the amount of asphalt? And you have a road fund, but the thing is, you have to come up with a five-year plan. You have certain streets you want to keep brick, historical streets, Creighton Avenue, you want to keep that a brick street, you come up with a five-year plan to properly maintain it, keep it in condition where it's, it's something that can be driven.
All right, I have a, there's another small person on the board here. Alan Gieler?
Yeah. Yeah, I know, but one I want to stop Grandview, so a couple blocks away. It seems, it certainly seems to be that if you're gonna do this work, the trenching, I mean, the steward work, that you ought to go curb to curb. Just, you have so few opportunities to do it right, I would try and do it right. Whether it's asphalt or brick, it's aesthetically, obviously the brick really looks nice. And Richard wrote that the job that was done, you know, by the, as we have water, really looked pretty, pretty good. So it's really great. The question is, and I came in to the question, why do you guys have to struggle with that? Clearly preferable to aesthetically to do the, the brick job, but it really is a tough decision. I mean, I really appreciate Rob's comment about, I didn't realize it was, you know, that eight miles out of thirty-two are brick. Really gets into interesting haves and have nots kind of questions, you know, who gets the brick streets, right? Because the folks who have it, certainly, I'm guessing are not really interested in, you know, the asphalt. Firstly, I'd be okay with it. I appreciate the folks who live close and, and care a lot about that. One question I'd ask, I guess, or maybe a couple, one is, talk about, you mentioned the brick collar on this side down on South Grandview.
Yeah, there's a brick collar over here.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. I lump over, yeah, yeah, don't we all? But the question is.
I run my bike over, you know, that's where I go, I have to kill myself.
Anyway, the question is, can you replace that collar as you're doing the job? Because if I'm not mistaken, as you approach it, coming from, from the south, you're sort of, it's, it's, I don't know, it's about this high. Much higher than the rest of the road service on both sides. Anyway, it seems to be allowed to do that.
I was just trying, we're trying to avoid keeping, expanding the scope on this project because Al Kassan's gonna say, hey, you know, you guys just keep getting bigger and bigger, that's not part of this project, so.
The other thing is, not knowing the condition of the rest of the infrastructure underneath, is there water, gas, something on?
Oh, that's, that's all, that's all caused in the surveying of the project.
So those, those lines would be replaced as part of the, until it's companies be notified, just like we do with our paving program and then you.
Well, no, I mean, this was pretty successful to get notifications, like Hawthorne. I know people are upset about the condition of Hawthorne, but that was on the two thousand and eighteen resurfacing list. We notified the utility companies that were gonna be paving Hawthorne, the utility companies come in, well, we have a project lined up of all new gas lines. Water companies notified, they have an opportunity, they'll go in and do reconstruction of the water lines before it's, the service is put down. So that's, the way in Hawthorne gets paved and actually our contractor for two thousand and eighteen is gonna come in, he didn't get it for nineteen, but that was part of his contract. He's gonna come in and, and resurface Hawthorne. Crafton Boulevard was on that list, but the gas company, you can see the work that was done there. And, and the best part about it is the gas company will reimburse the borough for a single lane restoration. So half of Hawthorne will be paid by the utility company, we'll get a full new street curb area. And that, that, all utility companies are notified, this project will be notified, now have an opportunity going in and actually, if they have water length and they replace the gas line, they'll go in and do it prior to, you know, to primary construction.
Anyway, I'm sorry, I would certainly encourage curb, curb work, just so you're silly not to do it. You know, just how many chances you really get if we, if you've got this kind of issue going on. The rest of it, aesthetically, it's terrific. Personally, with brick, but if you had to go with asphalt, I would do it if the answer is that you can't otherwise afford to do other things in your road program.
Thank you. All right, so that's the end of the votes that signed up. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak on the subject?
Is, is it a certain subject or any?
This is about Grandview. This is a hearing for South Grandview.
Yes, sir. Just had a quick question. You said that it would be laid with new brick? Is that correct?
Well, they'll use.
Existing?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not new brick?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Doyle. I live at twenty-five South Grandview.
Please send him the microphone, sorry.
I wasn't planning on talking, but I just have, I just have a question.
Is it John Doyle or what?
John Doyle, I live at twenty-five South Grandview. And I think that if I understand, from interpreting that map correctly, my house is north of where you guys are gonna be working, right? And then you mentioned it, it's just that that intersection you're focused.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how, it's a technical question, how do you separate the order for the houses that are north of that intersection? Your trench isn't going.
No, no, we just have the, the two existing catch basins that are there now.
Okay.
So you have, you know, your driveways here, they all come down the hill, they come into, they're gonna come into this catch basin.
I see.
Where existing now, they go into that catch basin into the sewer line.
I see.
Now it's gonna go straight into a brand new, just storm line.
I see, so what are the paths nearby to our house haven't gotten to the first catch basin yet? Obviously, I'm interested in the whole street being paved. So I'm just curious, I guess your trench starts at that catch basin?
Yeah, that's where we stop the work, is just, just past those catch basins.
Is there any talk about the whole street being paved there?
Um, I mean, it's something that, definitely we could talk about in a meeting program in general, but this is a, this is a pretty sizable road reconstruction project.
So, one of the aims I have had as council president is to have more hearings like this to get your input. And we had a planning commission meeting last, last night with the council. And we're gonna have more hearings like this to get your input as to the broader vision of the wants and needs of the community with regards to reconstruction and where we, where our pain points are. We definitely know as we ride around that there are some pain points and you're trying to figure out, what is the justification? Start working on those different areas, you know, a lot of it goes down to use number rides, trips. But there's more metrics and there's more feelings and opinion and we need to start incorporating that into the entire process. So that's what we're attempting to do tonight, so council as a whole can get some input from our constituents about what's important to them. And we've heard, you know, a broad range of opinion, we've heard professional opinion from engineers, they've provided some options. And now we're gonna, as a body, gonna have to weigh in and make a decision on, on behalf of everybody. But to your point about reconstruction, we, we know there are some roads that are like mobiles. It's, it's acknowledged, you know, my wife is seven and a half months pregnant. And she says that she tries avoiding parts of town because it's, it's a rough ride when you're pregnant. And I know Mr. Olson's sitting in the back and he heard her this weekend make, make that comment and I know he's an advocate for the bricks. But if you're seven and a half months pregnant, maybe you're not an advocate. So there's a wide variety of opinions and it's up to us to sort of distill, you know, what's important. A lot of it goes down to brass tacks and money and, and how we can deal with that over time.
Okay, well, thanks for answering my question.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanna jump in real quick. I mean, in the city of Pittsburgh, that was ahead most of my career. Before we would do anything on a brick street as far as resurfacing and going in with asphalt, we had our foreman or our field crew go out and actually do a petition. And have the residents sign off to approve the restoration of the street in asphalt. The majority, the one over, there's a hundred people and fifty-one wanted the asphalt over the brick, the street was resurfaced. So we put asphalt in. So it's something we did in the city as a courtesy to the residents, say, you know, we wanna come in and redo your street, but we wanna do it in asphalt because we can't afford being under Act forty-seven, because obviously you don't have the money to do Belgium block. There's Belgium block streets in the city of Pittsburgh. And we would go in and circulate a petition, get any input from the residents saying, we wanna go in and redo your street, but we're gonna do it in asphalt, yea or nay. So the majority of the people that live on that street that use the roads on a daily basis had input whether we did it in asphalt or stayed in brick. And unfortunately, most of the time it stayed the condition that it was, so.
So basically you were saying the choice was asphalt or nothing?
Asphalt or, or basically nothing.
I mean, I, I think that sort of a, a way to sum up the decision point is because this is likely the full restoration of either option is not going to be covered by the grant funding, which is really what's enabling us to, you know, comfortably do this, this project. Is, you know, does that mean that another smaller road doesn't get paved in that cycle? Do we have to make a choice of, you know, doing it in brick? And can we put off another road? It's just, you know, it's part of the same thing that we go into with the paving program every year. So I, I, I would say that, you know, the engineers can sort of take this input, council can mull it over and maybe closer to the actual grant application deadline would be a better time to make a final decision. But, you know, if there's any other resident feedback.
Yeah, but we only have till June twenty-eighth, great?
Yeah, it's another two meetings, so we, we have some time.
Yeah, Mr. Rob.
One quick question on the, or the overflow.
Microphone.
Sorry.
Deep Blue, forty-eight Maplewood, White Moon Residence. One quick question on that overflow that you're gonna be picking up, that's gonna be separated, you know, going into this, that's not gonna be going into the sewer. Do you have a percentage or an idea of what that would be applying towards down the road as far as Al Kassan? As far as how much, you know, is it gonna, we're gonna have X amount more gallons of water that are not gonna be going into the combined system?
Yeah, I mean, as far as just, just the calculation that we do with the fifteen acres, on a yearly basis, it was, I wanna say it's nine million gallons that were taken away that potentially goes towards Al Kassan. Yeah, it's almost, almost ten million gallons, so nine, nine million, nine hundred thousand gallons that would be taken away from the system that goes towards Al Kassan.
And that's what we wanted to interact?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Anybody else?
I have a kind of a question with the project.
Yeah, name, name and address.
Steve Palmer, I'm from Southland Wood, I'm on the other side of the block. My question is, a little bit of a brick, yeah, the brick were put in when labor was cheap and technology was expensive. Times have flopped. So, yeah, Rick, Rick is right, the brick were put in cheap, but now it's not gonna be put in cheap, the labor's gonna be your cost. So on a reconstruction like Rob's saying, you reconstruct the road, your fifteen-year reconstruction now is pennies on the dollar because now you have new base. Those bricks were put in for bases of model ways and they have forty thousand time instructors driving on it every day. But I get to the scope of the work with the sewer separation, are we really, is it worth getting a grant to spend eighty-five thousand dollars? They only spent twenty, like, do we need to separate in this area? You know, I know you can crawl up your papers and throw them at me now, because are we changing our NPDs permit for Crafton? Why do we wanna go one set, one separate area of the town be a separate sewer area? Which now means all these residents are gonna have to separate downspouts and everything else, which works into a whole nother area on our permit. Now we're MS four and SSO, so we have multiple things we have to worry about as residents in this thing too. Is it worth taking that little bit of water out for this problem? So, just food for thought.
Give me an answer on that. The intent here is not to create a separate sewer system. So you'll still be operating a combined system because the residents' downspouts and driveway drains or whatever other water sources collected is still going to that. So there's no intention, or it's not even cost effective or efficient to try to separate the system. What this is, is taking storm water flow that's easy to get to.
This is a low-end freight.
It's really inexpensive and it's really efficient. So what it is as well is there's consent orders coming out this year, as you know. And one of the requirements is that you maintain a certain percent capture. So this will greatly increase the amount of capture that you're going to get for this C twenty-three point of connection.
We short that in this new consent order, like, do we, I, I, my theory, if we have this project scoped right now, is it worth running this project until we get the requirement of this consent order? Nobody here is gonna say, hey, I'm drinking and driving while I listen to a lot of texts. I don't believe anybody's gonna tell themselves that they're breaking the law. We know the DP, we know the consent order's been a headache for a long time and is gonna continue to be a long time. Is it worth keeping this as a low hanging fruit until we need it to grab it, to take it out of our, into, or be our consent order compliance?
One of the disadvantages to that is that when the order comes, and it will be this year, when it comes, grow grant will be flooded with projects. And so when everybody's forced to do this work, now instead of having forty projects, they'll have four hundred. And chances are this may not get funded or it may not get funded at the percentage that it's at. So that's why when we brought this to Crafton, it was to, to get ahead of the curve, not to get in with, with everyone else and maybe get weeded out. Right now, Al Kassan loves this project, they love the Crafton Boulevard project. And, and Crafton Boulevard is in the same boat as this, except it's, it's much more expensive. But the point is that, to me, it's a significant gamble to wait until the orders are signed. When you're spending fifteen cents on the dollar to not only increase your percent capture, which you're required to do, not only in an order, but just in general, that's the requirement.
Even on the SSO, perfect, the CSO?
Yes, the SSO, the combined sanitary sewer system is required at eighty-five percent capture. So this, we calculated this, this sewer shed and you are at sixty-six percent capture. So I was gonna go over these stats in my, my engineer's report, but, so sixty-six percent capture, this project will probably take us to, we haven't been able to calculate exactly in the sewer shed because there's still some unknowns we're trying to work out, so we need some more time. But this will be a significant increase in the percent capture, it could take us to the eighty-five percent and this sewer shed will be completed. So we've got a, a chance to, to be in compliance with the federal regulations, which is your NPDs permit, with the new consent order that's coming out for fifteen cents on the dollar. And, and the added benefit that really isn't getting identified is now you've got ten million gallons of room in the sewage system. So it'll take bigger storms, it'll be less flooding, less overflow, less contamination.
I, I see what you're picking this area, but this area, there's no backup in this area, correct? There's no residential backup complaints in this area and is, is there any, any, the fact that pawning, of course, is the lowest area. I mean, you're right there at the lowest area with, with residents.
Um, I, I do wanna just kinda end this discussion, but this is, when we brought, there's a whole list of projects that I think we've gone over, maybe somewhere around January in deep detail, in a count of meetings. So, but so, I think there were eight or nine that we brought to Al Kassan. So, but so, I think there were eight or nine that we brought to Alka-San in the fall. This one was personally the one that I felt the best about because it was a very low cost per gallon removed for a very large quarry.
Yeah, and that's always a very.
So I mean, yeah, and, yeah, whether it's addressing sewer backups, sort of, they exist or don't. We do know that at some point the consent order is coming, it always feels like it's that thing that's somewhere over the rainbow, right? But I mean, this is probably one of the most cost-effective ones that we can very comfortably match from our cash flow in our current sewer fund, assuming we get, you know, a good grant match. So I mean, if I had to pick a favorite one out of that list, this would be it for me personally.
Yeah, it's not the project, I really question just spending money or not spending money, you know, taking, getting money to just spend money, that to me just seems like a wash. But that's, you know, we're saying we're getting ten percent on the dollar, it's, we're still spending our monies.
Right, it's very wise, just, you know, understanding the circumstances of the compliance in the consent order itself. The last round of the negotiations were just had about a month ago with the DEP, the DEP's going to come back with a final order. When they do, that's going to be the order that's going to be offered to the municipalities. So we're very close to getting that order, I think this is the last cycle. So if you've been invited to submit an application, like this project has in Crafton Boulevard, whoever doesn't submit this time is going to get thrown into the myriad of hundreds of projects that are going to follow in the next grant cycle as a result of the order, because the order's going to require these types of projects for combined systems and lining type projects for separate systems.
Is there any flow monitoring to verify, or are you just taking surface area drainage?
No, there's flow monitoring.
There's all been monitoring, not to take that, verify that point.
Alka-San has flow monitoring for all of the overflow points in Crafton, so we've got good data to tell us, you know, what's there now, what's happening, what's overflowing.
All right, thank you.
Good questions. Anything else about sewers?
Any additional questions, comments?
One question. On that, excuse me. When you say, you know, we have to hit this one to take advantage of the monies.
That's my opinion, yes.
That's your opinion, all right. Now, when that comes down, and that decree comes down, and all that, if we don't have to have this, and we've already put the money, you know, we've already put our bid in, we'd like to pull out without any penalty.
Yes, actually, you're committing to this grant, you're not spending, you're not committing to the grant from a standpoint until you actually let the project begin construction. So this is just to let them offer us the grant. This is an application, we've been invited to apply, so we don't even know if we'll get the grant, we may not get the grant, we may not get the funding that we want. So that would be a reason why we'd say, no thanks, we're not going to do this work, we'll figure something else.
What's the timeframe on this, it's coming down a new ruling for us to be able to comply?
The, I believe the consent order, well, okay, that's a good question, I think the consent order will come this year, I'm fairly certain of it, and it's a six-year cycle. So really, five years to do the project and a year to monitor to prove that you've got the percent capture that you said you would get. So you have five years after the order is implemented, which I believe will be this year.
Okay, but the South Grand View project that you feel, a lot of people feel, it's a good project to have going now because of low hanging fruit, and what RJ had said. And that might be the ten million gallons that you need to cover for the next decree or.
That's right, it could, because what's going to happen after six years, there'll be another consent order, and then you'll be required to get closer to the eighty-five percent if you haven't gotten it already. So this project, I'm saying, without having the numbers, my gut says this will get us darn close if not to the eighty-five percent.
For that sewer shed.
For this sewer shed alone, that's right, for C twenty-three, which is the name of the sewer shed.
Thank you.
I think an important thing to talk about, when you talk about the consent decree, you're trying to make them wrong. That sound funding mandate that came down from the EPA and the DEP, there's limits though, they're not going to put hardships on any municipality that have to go over above their budgetary line items to actually do what needs to be done. Say eighty-five percent captured and needs to be done, they're not going to come out and say, well, you didn't capture eighty-five percent, we're going to cite and fine you as long as you follow the criteria that was set up in your permit. I mean, there's a list of non-minimum requirements, and the borough is complying, though people say we're not complying, we're not complying, but we are complying. We're following to the two, we're following every little bit that we need to do to be compliant as far as the NPDD's permit. We're following the non-minimum controls, there's a list of requirements that the federal government wants us to do to be compliant with the Clean Water Act. So really, it's not like we're not complying, because we are, that's why the sewer fund, I think, was initially put into place to make sure that Crafton Borough doesn't need to be done so they're not in violation of any DEP or consent decree. So saying we're not complying or not complying, obviously, I think the Clean Water Act wants no infiltration in any pricks or streams. But also, that's down the line, but they're not going to put any hardship on boroughs and municipalities to be totally free of any contribute sewage or any type of contaminants in the streams. So really, we've been, Crafton, I think, has done an excellent job, that I can see the last four years with the sewer repairs, infiltration, and other programs that we have that have gone off for, at least, since the sewer program was put into place. So I think saying not complying and complying is sort of setting up mixed signals. Crafton Borough's going to be cited or fined for anything they have done in the past and continue to do in the future. So I think this is great, it gets you ahead of the game, but in the same token, if the new consent decree comes down, we're not not complying, obviously, and you know that, right? I mean, obviously, we're doing, we're following the rules that are in order for us to be complying.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's my understanding that we have applied for this grant in the past, and Alka-San ran out of the money, so we weren't able to get it. And it's my understanding, perhaps, we have a good shot at getting this grant this time, because we missed it the last time, is that correct?
I'm not really familiar with that. Okay. We had submitted a grant for, what's the project that we're doing now?
To East North Emily?
Yeah.
Font, Sycamore?
No, I know what you're thinking of right now, okay, so we do have a current sewer separation grow grant that we are preparing to do the construction on, that is the Fountain and Sycamore separation. However, I think you're thinking of the Small Water and Sewer Grant, which was repaired for the Johnston, North Emily Street sewer issue. We did not get that grant, I think, shortly before I came on board. However, due to the fact that we do have a pretty robust sewer fund, we're just doing that project at our, you know, full cost, essentially, we can absorb that. But that is a separate type of grant from this one.
Okay, so from Alka-San's standpoint, because that's a different funding agency, I think that's the state, the Small Water and Sewer Grant, but from an Alka-San's standpoint, the last project that we submitted, I think you said Fountain and Sycamore?
Yeah, and then the Rain Garden was under this as well.
And the Rain Garden along.
So we had a better chance of getting the grant, you know?
We do this time, what, they changed the process.
Well, we should get it in before June.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to be closing this hearing, we have a brief executive session to go over some personnel issues. We will start the next meeting between, we're going to start up at seven twenty, all right? Hearing adjourned.